Today is Wednesday, July tenth, twenty twenty-four, and it is now seven oh one P M. Rules of speaking. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raised hand on hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments, questions, et cetera. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, H R S ninety-two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless allowed for under H R S ninety-two. A majority vote, five of this nine-member board is required to meet forum requirements. Now, first on the agenda is a city monthly report, Honolulu Fire Department. We do not see Honolulu Fire Department on at this time, so we will move on to Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Kritin Hatiko at the Kali Police Station. Again, I'm one of the nighttime commanders. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Let me give you some stats for the month of June. Uh, there were two burglaries reported uh for your area. Uh, four mortal vehicle thefts, which is up a bit from one in May. Uh, seven general thefts. Uh, one theft from a vehicle, two robberies. One aggravated assault reported, one sex assault reported, and two simple assaults reported. All calls for service, uh, including miscellaneous calls were five hundred twenty-eight in June, which is down from five hundred fifty-seven in May. Um, for the tip on a tip on a month, um, I'm gonna be talking a little bit about uh uh your public safety uh in regards to many of the the thefts from persons that occur within our district. Um, a lot of times we have people when they're walking home from the bus stops, um, having their purses or their backpacks snatched from them by individuals and having them run off. Um, what I would try to suggest, and I know it's hard, you know, a lot of times you finish work late at night, um, the bus comes late and um sometimes we cannot help it. But if you can't help it, try to be in situations where you can't, where you're not gonna isolate yourself. Um, try to walk as as far as you can with other people, even if that means taking a little bit longer route home or to your work. Um, one of the things that's important is to, it's it usually tends to be they're trying to take bags. So I would suggest you have get some kind of cross-body bag and even a backpack where across your body and with the bag in front of you. Because normally these types of thefts occur where they they come from the back and they grab it as they go past you to 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 get you unaware. Um, I also suggest what you wanna do is when you're when where we're out and about, take note of your surroundings, stop, take a breath, take note of the people who are taking note of you, look people in the eye. That way you get a measure of what is going on um around you. And also to make yourself appear to to be a harder target, yeah? Um, they wanna catch you guys unaware. If you're showing them that you're aware, that they're there, um, a lot of times that's enough to deter them. Um, also depending where you're from, where you're at, if you're at a store, um, you're passing somewhere and you feel like you noticed something strange and you don't feel all right, don't don't be afraid to to go into the store and ask for an escort. Um, it may be a worker, it may be another shopper. Um, if you feel that you you need a police escort, call us. That's what we do that all the time as well. You can call us, let us know what the situation is, and we can come and check it out for you. You don't have to wait to be attacked to ask for service, okay? That's about it. Um, uh, if are there any questions?
Any more questions uh for Honolulu Police Department from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Um, thank you, Honolulu Police Department.
Yes, have a good day.
Have a good day, thank you. And up next is the Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi, good evening. I just have one announce, one main break that was near twenty-four twenty-four Notley Street, and there's a one general announcement. We wanna invite you all to our twenty twenty-four annual non-thirsty plant sale at our Halawa Zero Skate Garden. That's located at ninety-nine dash one-two-six-eight Iwana Street. That's gonna be on Saturday, August third, from nine A M to three P M. So this three-acre lush garden, a lush oasis nestled in Halawa Valley Central Park industrial area is a live display of child tolerant and native plant varieties. So it's a free admission. You can park on Iwana Street and catch the free shuttle to the garden. So it's a family-friendly event, and we're offering a variety of zero plants by local vendors, a team of plant doctors from U H Master Gardener Program with plant care advice and information. We have educational booths, including rainbowl attachment information. We have free soil conditioner, and we have cactus and succulent society for wise display of award-winning cacti and succulents. So as always, please go to boardofwatersupply dot com to get more information about this or anything else from the Board of Water. And that's all I have.
Any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And up next, we will move on to election of officers and board business. So election of officers to serve from July twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, and any other office of the board determines it needs to conduct its business. So you start with Chair. Uh, same, same aside. Uh, I believe he typed us uh running late, but he'll he's on his way.
So why not we don't have?
Oh, no. Um, we'd be maybe hard to say.
Was the community concerned?
Residencies, community concerns, okay, the pressure from that, okay.
Yeah, we'd have to skip all these because we probably just not before we're done yet, yeah? I also wish you would know why I'm there.
Okay, since we do not meet forum, we are going to um table the election of officers in board business, and we can move on to residents and community concerns. Are there any residents and community concerns at this time? You can come up and um speak into the the mic, so I can um online confer to the guests right here as well. You can take the chair. You can bring your question.
I have a neighbor from my house warehouse, they're doing a uh car, maybe new street or old street or something, uh seventeen twenty-six Macanah, and they're working with El Habala. So they have a warehouse, but uh they're doing a car uh fixing car or painting cars. So every time they're doing that, it smells from next to my house. So I try to call the police, and the police come, but they stop there. So when they stop, they stop right away, but in the following day, they come back and do it. But that's one I concern with, that's our residential area, that's not, that's yeah. What's the street? Uh, seventeen twenty-six Macanah.
Um, cool, okay. Um, you can pull it in and send the concern to, I guess, whatever city city department of concerns, probably P P P or something, but yeah, we'll send it out for the next minute.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you, because I was concerned for my kids and my mom for their health as well.
Like a dress, it's actually a dress. During the work, which I may have this behind me, that's what I thought. It's not like a, it's a, it's a, yes. Yes.
So is it from your house or in the back of your, in the back of your property?
Yeah.
The back of your property. So it would be the other street?
Uh, it's like uh Friday Road, it's on Nukwiga.
What's the other concern?
Uh, Nukwiga.
No, better.
Yeah, going down to the street.
Thank you for coming this time, so including me.
Thank you.
And um would there other any um other community um residents and community concerns at this time, online or in person? Oh, it's Dana. Do you want to come up so online? Eh, oh, yeah.
Uh, my name is Dana.
Yeah.
And I was hoping the fire department could be here, but there was a fire last night. Uh, on Rose Street and ten Fort Hills. At my, at my friend's house, so I just wanted to know. So, yeah, happy last night. The other thing was, I'll give you guys a heads up with uh the planning and preparation for in November twenty-ninth. You you guys are the first, you know, uh, to plan the clean business for it again, so. So you guys must know, so it's the twenty-ninth, and we're gonna still do the same route that we did last year. And it's gonna finish off in a couple of weeks, so you guys wouldn't help me anywhere.
Is there people also who'd be at the announcements for then?
Yeah, so I just wasn't sure when, so I just threw a light in there. Well, November.
We're planning way ahead.
You guys wait, wait. So we're getting a lot of.
I liked that event, because it also got to meet the police, the law, and stuff. Like, what is it, holiday in the period to?
The Christmas, the annual Christmas, it's gonna, I'm trying to do history on it, cause it's the seventeenth. So trying to find out all the history.
Oh. I'll repeat the information to, so November twenty-ninth, annual Christmas parade, um, okay.
Or detail, people.
What it says about, okay, you. Okay, and and are there any more? Okay, so um Alex Kumalai has uh designated community concerns.
Uh, this afternoon, uh, when I was on my way to the meeting, uh, my neighbor called, and we had some kids playing in the stream between our house and Vitale Elementary School, and they were building on fire. So my neighbor talked to the kids, the kids uh disappeared. She called me, I went in the stream, I couldn't find a kid, but found a smoldering uh fire, so I put the fire out. But then uh, I think he's concerned for the neighbors, and uh, it's like they got some stuff from the school. School getting some construction going on, so they don't pay it, and I don't know what else they had. Anyway, I think they accessed the stream from the school, so we're gonna try and notify the school tomorrow about what going on adjacent to their property. Actually, the the stream belongs to the school. And they try to keep the kids out because it's right in the area of the stream restoration project, where they get native plants growing. So it's always concerning what kids are in there unsupervised. So anyway, uh, that's what happened this afternoon.
They go to, um, certain local rain. And um are there other community resident and community concerns at this time?
Uh, just, just, uh, sorry, it's a, it's the same area um about my house, there's a storm drain. The stream goes under the road, there's a storm drain that's supposed to channel when we have heavy rain, it's supposed to channel water into the, just to drop down into the stream bed. But um, last year, there was a lot of debris, and just the incredible amount of like dirt and debris built up and blocked up the storm drain. So it doesn't work anymore, so I've been trying to uh use me, just shovel it up myself. But there's still just just a lot of dirt, so right now the water passes the little channel that I made and still goes down the road, and then it causes like, um, on the road. So I was hoping if that's something would work, I think, or or if this, I know, I love you.
I think I mentioned, I think I mentioned it to the sidewalk community.
Oh.
Why? Was it, yeah, so was the concern, I mean, was uh, did it or did it work as far as what they're gonna do about it?
So we haven't had a meeting with sidewalk community. But it's, so B W S?
I, well, I didn't know, I mean, there's, so the buildup of of dirt and rocks, I mean, is is something that water can break. And and that's pretty, it's pretty solid.
See, when was that? When was that break?
Oh, uh, I'm sorry, I was here, like in your room.
So Lynn Robinson has her hand up, um, so she may have something to add, Lynn?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, hi, I'm Lynn Robinson, the constituent services director, we're city council member Tyler De Santos Tam. Um, if you would like to send me your address, I can put in a quest for investigation to try to find out who's responsible. Um, sometimes oddly, we find out that even though the city had constructed these um stormwater basins, um, homeowners are sometimes responsible, but it's good to just start with um finding out how we should move forward. So um, if you'd like to email me, I'd be happy to try to help.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
I'll put my my contact information in the chat, and then maybe Spencer or Chair can help you. I'll look for your email. Thanks. Sorry to interrupt.
Are you somebody who's? Thank you, and are there any more uh resident and community concerns online or in person?
Can I follow up on the super lies, the one that, the one that, um, about the plane? Yeah. Fire, fire, do you follow to support? So uh, I'll go on the way for me. So we'll follow up tomorrow, okay, but tomorrow might be late. I mean, the fire is out. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we'll let the school know, and if we need to uh, please report. Fire department, but yeah, the fire department not here tonight, so we're not gonna be aware of it. We'll follow up. The school is out now, so kids are all over. The night before, last night, three kids was on uh Vitale School roof, running around, construction went on now, so they got a hold of the ladder, went up on a roof, ran around on a roof, called the police. Took a while for them to come, kids were gone, and they took the ladder with them, we saw them walking down the road with the ladder. So the construction company said they was missing a ladder this morning. It's down the road something. So how old are you? Ah, yeah, new school, young kids.
Yeah, Chris, the national line.
Yeah. The school is out, so kids are restless.
Yeah.
They need something to do.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thanks, so I'll let you know, follow up.
And um, do you have a, or you, or over just a moment, just a second? So, okay. So um, if there are no more resident and community concerns, uh, we can actually go back to the third item or the election of officers in board business now that we have six members, Chester is online now. Um, so we're gonna start off with the election of officers to serve from July twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, and any other officer the board determines it needs to conduct its business. Uh, should we start with Chair?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, we can start with Chair. Any nominations for Chair?
I nominate you. You did a great job.
Thank you. Yes. Fumbled here and there, I'll admit, but I I tried. Thank you. Are there any more nominations than those that wants to try to be Chair? Any online chances? Well, oh, if it's just one, then you can.
Oh, no, you still need to go.
Oh, so I need to go.
We just didn't see the other, we do not.
Oh.
If there's no other nominations, um, we can close the nominations, uh, vote.
So, oh, yeah, if there's a, if there's no more, if there's not any more nominations, then we can close the nominations and votes.
So, um, so we have um for the position of Chair, we have Leola Tumbaga. Um, I know that's only one person, but you need to say name of the name of the person that you're calling for or abstaining. Um, I'll start with the people who is here first, and then I'll vote for her. Um, Simeon Rojas.
Yes, I vote for Leola.
Um, Michael Gadi.
Leola.
Alan Kumalai.
Leola.
Chester Coga.
Leola.
Tech Tasi.
Leola Tumbaga.
And then um Franklin, Andrew, and off out Franklin. I'll see you, so. Then once twice eaten, dated. Eten, dating, once twice Fernando Pan. Fernando Pan, still six votes. Congratulations, sir.
And next, we will do open nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair on my list? You nominate yourself as well if you'd like, or others that you think would fit as Vice Chair?
Anybody, anybody, more guys. Let's, let's nominate sooner.
Okay, okay, so we have a nomination for Simeon Rojas as Vice Chair. Any other nominations?
Other than the time from?
No. Different, oh, so it's just Simeon, okay. Still Simeon Rojas. Are there any other nominations? Uh, if not, then we can close nominations and we'll need two votes.
So I'll start with the people who's here again. Um, Michael Gadi, Simeon. Um, Alan Kumalai.
Simeon.
Tech Tasi.
Simeon.
Chester Coga.
Simeon.
Um, Leola Tumbaga.
Simeon.
Simeon Ross.
Next, we have the um Secretary. So are there any uh open nominations for Secretary, um, any nominations so far? Secretary, and then Treasurer, yeah. Any nominations for Secretary, ready?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at.
What Secretary?
So Secretary would, um, if there's any um corrections to the minutes, I'll still leave, but you'll be, um, Secretary will take over. Um, if the Chair and Vice Chair is not filled, then you'll be the next presiding officer. And then that's the same as the, if you have the Treasurer, then if the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary is not not in, not in fitness, then the Treasurer will be the one to run the, but that's basically the just of uh duties of those positions.
Can we combine Officers in person? Like, for instance, can we have a Secretary Treasurer?
I don't, I don't think so. It's still legal to have it, even though it's still, um, even though kind of the Treasurer's position is not really that one for now, but still, just in case all these people are not here, we might get, at least we have somebody to pick them up.
I think I was Secretary, and I was just moved to change, so I think we just had no Secretary for this uh, for, uh, next six months.
The new one's been doing the Secretary role for a while.
I don't think so, because I was Secretary.
We're fortunate because the, you know, the neighborhood commission carries so much of the, the ministry burden.
I was nominated Michael Gadi.
And my neighbor, so.
I'm the one who's in the line, you guys.
Yeah.
The Secretary.
The nominations come from?
Yeah, um, the nomination has to come from the board. Um, and then you have to accept the nomination.
So, but basically now you're doing this responsibility.
Yeah. Usually we'll send the minutes to the Chair and the Secretary again, and if you have, but usually they don't have it. But if they did have something bad, they'd be happy to send back to us and we'd be better than just doing it.
Alright.
Okay, okay, so Michael Gadi is one nomination. Are there any other nominations at this time? And if not, we can move on, we can close nominations and no votes.
And we have um Michael Gadi for a position of Secretary. Um, Simeon Rojas.
Michael Gadi.
Alan Kumalai.
Michael.
Uh, Tech Tasi, Michael. Chester Coga. Chester.
Oh, Michael.
Um, Leola Tumbaga.
Michael Gadi.
And Michael Gadi. Congratulations.
And next. Now we will open nominations for Treasurer. Uh, any nominations at this time?
What is Treasurer's?
So it's, it's, uh, we did away with the having the financial statement, um, because we're always gonna send out a a um agenda and minutes, because that's what the issue was about, is that of tracking that down. But we'll always send out the agenda and minutes, and we'll always find that, eh, um, they're ready to leave that. So technically, right now, it's a, that's the first, fourth person in the order, you know, the the Chair, Vice Chair, and you're not there, but they'll be more than presided over you.
So we'll talk about Treasurer nominations.
Treasurer nominations.
I just wanna say, I think we need to figure out, how do we make it so that neighborhood boards have an actual operating budget? You know, because there's a lot of concerns that come up to the neighborhood board, and we don't really have a means to do anything with it, because we don't have any money. We have like a hundred dollars or something, but I think we need to figure out how do we change, you know, county policy or state policy so that we actually have money that we can work with. In which case, Treasurer becomes an important role. Yeah, so I just wanna put it out there.
Any other? Your nominations, any self-dominations?
Chester.
Chester, do you accept the nomination?
Well, I'd hate to take the top away from the house, but.
Nope. Wait, wait, wait. Chester, yeah, Chester, go for it, Chester.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any more nominations for treasurer at this time? If not, then we can, um, we can close nominations and go to a vote.
And we have, um, Chester Coga for the position of treasurer. Uh, Simeon Rojas. Um, Michael Gadi. Alan Kumalai.
Chester.
Teykahasi.
Chester.
Leola Tumbaga.
Chester.
And Chester Coga.
Here.
Here.
Move yourself. Congratulations, chair.
Um, next, we're going to, um, determine a meeting date, time, location, and format. Uh, virtual components. So, the meeting date, that would be the second losing of every month. At seven P M, location, I guess is the part we wanna determine. If we wanna keep meeting here, we can, but are there any changes to what we have now?
We should try to have it back in the district. How near not being Kali Valley, because.
That's one of our concerns, uh, while, our first choice would be in the area while, uh, Kali Valley neighborhood board jurisdiction.
Yeah.
But A V A is not available because of construction. And. I don't know, I think you would rent a center. Yeah, but then we need to get approval from the school. And that would. Yeah, uh, I think when you use the school as a fee involved.
Yeah.
Always paying two hundred dollars.
Well, we got two hundred dollars, so.
That's all we got.
Can't want me to.
But, well. Uh, I'm an advocate for here, because, uh, we don't incur any fees, because we gotta pay for the video guy when they go outside of the office, right? We pay for the video guy, I don't know how bad he is, but, and we pay for a rental of a facility. And, I know, it's not in a district, so. Discourages people to come.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Chester has his hand up, um, Chester, do you have, um, something to add?
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't like with Alan. We try to have it in the community, uh, either at the rec center or, uh, A V A, Alan makes it.
This, um, Mr. Hasi.
Well, I think Lynn has her hand up too.
Oh, Lynn, oh.
No, it's, it's.
This chance, please.
Okay. I wanted to propose, um, that at least, that we try to reach out to our, our related amount to see if people we could use their, um, the, I forget the, the term, but yes, if there's, but they have a very nice place there, um, that might be available.
We'll try and stay ahead and, uh, with speed.
Yeah. And also, what about Kali New Castle School?
But I think is the fear, guys, is that. We have enough budget for all of these, and we have enough budget for. Yeah, we, we can, while we look at some of these. Are you, you're good.
Okay, so, um, I am hearing, um, different suggestions for locations, so, can I get a motion to, if you guys are okay with the first two, the meeting date, uh, for meeting second Wednesday of every month, at seven P M, we'll retain those two parts and meeting location to be determined, can I get a motion?
So.
So. Just thinking, Mr. Hasi, and can I get a second? Is there, Simeon, a second, um? And then, any questions or discussion?
How that, uh, motion into the format, so we can continue, we can continue with, uh, zoom more, or, yeah.
Virtual and.
Yeah. There will always be virtual.
So is it retaining the virtual part of the meeting, or?
Virtual and.
Virtual and. And then we, we send the votes.
And did you, uh, we see all the changes? And if there are exceptions, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Oh, um, Dana.
When, when we said we're moving to for a location, we have to make sure technically we have, uh, people doing. Yeah. People go to a school where.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take, um, we'll take suggestions, and then, um, someone from our staff will go ahead and look at it, if it's feasible to meet air weather, time, availability, and, um, the cost.
And so. The. But, um, if there are no objections, then we, we vote for this vote.
Yeah, for no objection, then, um, we do not, we do not.
To opt, to, to, yeah.
Yeah, always that I.
Oh, go for the votes. Okay.
So I don't need to do air votes also.
Oh. Okay, so if we're, um, if there are no objections, then we can, we do, um, we need to.
All those in favor.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed. Okay. So it's like we'll retain everything, it's. Oh, any abstain, abstentions?
What's possible.
Okay. Thank you. And, okay, next, we will determine the recess schedule, so up to three per year. The current one is, uh, that we will take recess on the month of May and the month of December. And if your suggestions for a change of May, if, if anyone wanted to, but if they're just fine with May and December, we can keep that, um. Is there a motion to keep, um, to retain and keep the recess from May and December? Or is there any?
Yeah. So.
So, okay.
A, say go.
So moved by, or, oh. Second by Mr., um, Mr. Hasi, and are there any question, discussions? If not, if there's no objection, then we can, then we can, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Um, all those opposed. And all those that abstain. It has passed, um, and next, we will determine, um, adoption of oral testimony rules. So for the rules of speaking, um, you want to choose to retain, to keep that, um, the same, or if there's any suggestion to change, um, the rules of speaking. Let's see, uh, we have, uh, sixty minutes of minimum, uh, for a points. But if there are no, um, objections, then we can, we get a motion to retain those rules, the rules of speaking that we have. Mr. Kumalai.
Frankly.
Yeah, so, I'm sure about the, the link of the force. Is he on? Is he here?
That's him.
He's not on my, um.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, that's alright.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Does he have a? Yeah.
I think just the interpretation of it. Has encouraged the people of Kali Valley. But, if we'd like, um, can I get a motion to keep the, um, the adoption of oral testimony rules that we have for the rules of speaking, your motion? Motion to move.
A motion to, uh, keep the adopting, uh, oral testimony rules as we currently have it.
So Mr. Kumalai, is there a second? Michael Gadi, second, um, are there any objections? Mr. Hasi, did you have something?
I just wanted to, well, just a brief discussion on this, which is, um, I think the the concern that Randy had was, was actually, was in response to something that I had brought up in a previous meeting, which is the idea that, um, we try to encourage all of the reports to be transmitted ahead of time and first to digest the reports, so that there's less time spent in meeting on going through the content of reports and more on discussion about the report itself. Um, that was the only thing, and then, I think Randy had some, some reasonable, um, you know, arguments against what I was saying. So I just wanted to provide that context for today's.
Thank you, Mr. Hasi, and.
Oh, I think also, um, if they wanted to extend the three minutes, or you're supposed to hold on it, like, as member, so that you can extend that to a minute, but, that's, that's what it says here. That's what he was trying to, uh, explain, that's why, trying to change the, the rule is just three minutes. So it's, it's.
Um, oh. But, um, do we have a second, oh? Are there any objections, uh, to, we just got to. We just got to the vote, so, um, all those in favor to keep the rules of speaking as is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. And all those abstained. The, uh, motion has, uh, has been, has passed. Uh, next, we will do, um, next up is the election of a communications committee chairperson. Um, I believe, Mr. Frank, oh, he's not here right now, but I think he nominated himself, um, I don't know.
He was on.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm.
You can't, you can't vote for somebody.
Too far here.
You can postpone it.
You can postpone.
Yeah.
If he was on, then one is to be it, then, you know, you're one. One is to be it, then, you can postpone it for next.
You can postpone.
You want.
Yeah.
We can make that a penalty for not showing up, it could be worked.
Well, you mentioned about that too, for people with being that thing.
Right.
Well, if you want, we can postpone.
If he really wants it, we should put it on, unless somebody else really wants it.
No, or there any, yeah, nominations?
If somebody else really wants it, we can do it. I wouldn't nominate him for about ten minutes.
Communications.
Yeah, I know. No, if Randy wants it, I, I'm not even sure.
Think about it. You can take the bottom, we can vote on it next meeting. Okay, so we will, um, you know, we'll move it to the next meeting instead, and lastly, we will do approval of regular meeting minutes for Wednesday, June twelve, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion? Any, any? Do you have objection? Oh, Simeon, the approval of regular meetings.
Yes, uh. About, uh, moves, uh, for the, uh, regular, uh, move, regular meeting.
So moved, uh, moved by Mr. Rojas, are there any second?
Second.
Mr. Kumalai, second, are there any discussions, um, comments or questions about the regular meeting minutes? And if not, we can, um, go to voting again, um, all those in favor, uh, approval of regular meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed. All those abstained. And, um, meetings have been up to, or the, for the Wednesday, June twelve, twenty twenty. Um, we did residents and community concerns, so, uh, next, we will be doing the state house candidate forum, and I believe we go into recess, so that way, Ms. Christine can, uh, be maybe a it's a moderator, moderator for the state candidate, uh, just a lot of questions. And if there's any questions from the community, um, do I, okay, so I'll just go into recess now, and we can do the, oh, it'll still be on, so online can still see, um, the participation. Yeah. Um, but we will have, um, Christine, how should we do for nine, or? So Car, we have Caroline, it's a Carol, sorry, I'm sorry, I said Caroline, Carol here, as well as, um, Teykahasi. Um, May Zino is not able to make it to, uh, tonight, I was hoping she would send in maybe her answers, but I've been watching that, um, but.
I, I, I got a message from her, uh, she was bitten by, uh, was, yeah, while she was walking on, um, you know, on the neighborhood, uh, campaign.
Campaign.
Uh, it, her leg, I was too, it was a break, so she was walking, she was, uh.
So, um, I think the only two prompts that will start up is like the two minutes, um, two minute introduction for each candidate for the state house representative, as well as the question. Uh, I'm still speaking on the check side, this is just recess, but, yeah, did you guys want to, um, sit?
Yeah.
See, I'm thinking they could be here so that we can see their lovely faces, uh, moderator can sit. Uh, well, ideally, oh, yeah, because they have to, um, into here, yeah.
It's so serious.
So.
You want us over here?
You can be over here, so that way the camera can see you and you can speak to. You can move.
You can say yours, you can.
Yeah, well, I can.
But are you going to be able to tell to the students? Oh, thank you very much.
Um, El, El Doc.
Yep.
El Doc.
El Doc.
Okay, um, so, we can obviously do it however we want, um. So.
Uh, yeah, if you have anybody here, should I, um, I'll start to check with you if there are any community questions, of course.
Um, I could see, um, resident.
Yeah.
It's just the, some just when it comes up, yeah. Yeah, just the two so far, and. Is it unrecognized or recorded? Oh, we, we actually did that earlier because. Yeah, um, but he did, um, some of that, yes, yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, welcome to our candle forum, thank you everybody for attending, please welcome. All our audience who are in, appearing person and online, and anybody who will be watching this whole spot. You think, uh, Leola for organizing this and putting it together.
Thank you for being our moderator.
Okay. And thank our candidates who have shown up and will take the time to respond, visitants to, to know who you are and what you are doing. So, uh, we'll, our, uh, we provided a question to our candidates, uh, beforehand, we'll have I will give each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves, and then we'll give them a couple of minutes to respond to the question. With, was.
Do you have any time?
What do you? Uh, you know, I mean, it's really, I think we would, we would, um, we can. Um, the question was, what is a pressing issue in our district or community, and how should it be addressed, so. Carol first? You want to introduce, introduce first?
I will.
Yeah. So, uh, little my, my call, my name is Carol Kuluwaifu, and I'm a candidate, obviously, for House District Twenty-nine, Kali Valley and Papua Lama Heights. Uh, I'm on neighborhood board fourteen, not this one, but the other one, and I'm also on the Lamekila Multi-Purpose Senior Center Board, advisory board. I was raised in this district, went to my, my school, and then come in this schools, and I've lived and worked here for decades, or there, or forever. In House District Twenty-nine, in House there. Um, first, I was working for Noguahum, and then, uh, at the legislature, and then community schools, and now for Kali Union Church as director of operations. Well, that's so much different. Um, our neighborhood is very special and unique, we are diverse and multicultural, and we come from many backgrounds, and we work together for the good of our families and our communities. And we come from many backgrounds and we work together for the good of our families and our communities. And I've worked in the legislature for over a decade, most recently as a senior policy analyst in the house. So I'm very familiar with writing, uh, reviewing and evaluating legislation and how the legislature works. My goal is to serve our community and support traditional family values in our government. I'm a woman of faith who loves God and loves the people of Hawaii. I, when I first started this journey into government, I saw that the people on my street have no voice in the legislature. They're busy working, they're trying to raise their family, they don't have time to testify for or against legislation that will change their lives. So I'm running to be the voice for the people of Kalih and Kapala Lama. In the lawmaking process, we need to speak up against laws that raise the cost of living or break down our families. To give perspective on how bills will impact my neighbors negatively or positively. And when I'm elected to be a strong advocate for the working families I represent. From Kupunut Kekki, I will be your voice. I hope to ask for your hope and support, uh, in the upcoming elections. If you'd like more information about me, please check out my website. It's carolkaapu.org. C-A-R-L-E, don't forget the E, K-A-A-P-U dot O-R-G. And I'm honored to represent my neighbors in Neighborhood Board 14 and I've been honored to represent you all in the legislature.
Would you have to respond to your question?
The question, yeah. So, um, I feel that the most pressing issue is the cost of living that is continuing to increase. Um, I think the legislature made a big step this year when they reduced the taxes, our income taxes. But, um, I don't think it's enough. I think we need to go one step further and reduce the general excise tax on doctors, medicine, food. That's the things that really take up, just the little bit that that would save would add up because all the families have those costs. And I also think we need to, um, increase our food production and our farming so that we have good jobs, but also there's good healthy food to have. Almost all of our food is brought in, brought in in, but we can grow good food here. So I think those are the two most big pressing. That's not necessarily just for Kalih. But what, um, Kokua Kalih Valley has done in the back of the valley in creating food and creating jobs and creating opportunities for our young people to learn how to farm has been really good. And so I think that things like that are very important for our community.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Hey, everybody. Aloha. My name is Kaike Hasi. I live in Kalih Valley. Um, on Kui Kell Street, just near the King Store. And my family on my mom's side is from Ilopasur, Taguatin, on my, on my father's side. From the Big Island, Kohala and Kona. So kind of the midpoint between those two places is Kalih in some ways. So that's, that's where, um, that's where I, you know, my wife and I live and we have three children and a dog. And I just want to say Carol, how grateful I am for you coming because she's very active on, in. It's like a parallel universe, going to her neighborhood board the other night. Because, um, you know, a lot of the same concerns, but really excellent leaders, you know, advocating for their community. And Carol is very vocal there. She does some important work. So my background is, um, I, I, I worked at the legislature as well. I was a budget analyst under, under Chairman Dwight Takamin in the House Finance Committee. And my quota there was the education budget, which at the time and still is the largest single budget of in within the department, within the entire state budget. You know, the state budget is nineteen billion dollars. And I really believe that the budget is kind of the main job, frankly, of the legislature. Because it's, it's where everything, everything touches the state budget. And it's really an indication of our priorities and our values. And looking at the budget, you see what we, what we care a lot about and also what we don't. You know, like, I'm really concerned that for years we still haven't had a, um, the rec center for the kids at Kalih Valley Homes, which is one of the reasons why we have problems with, with, um, vagrancy and all these things in our community, like what you were speaking about earlier. Um, we have, we still don't have sidewalks, you know, for a lot of, of, of the district. We don't have air conditioning in many of our schools. And in an era of climate change and, and, you know, and of falling test scores, you know, we need to think about how do we make, how do we set up our children for success? Uh, and something like air conditioning is a really basic thing that, that kids require in order to be able to focus on their studies. And we know how important education is. My other role at the legislature was the education committee clerk. So that was under Chairman Taka, uh, Tenito from Kanebohe. And, um, my role there was all of education policies, so things like charter schools and, you know, homeschooling and all of these issues around equity within our public school system. Public education is really important, especially in our local communities. Twenty-six percent of the D O E is Filipino students, twenty-five percent is native Hawaiian. I, I was often the only person in, in meetings about education who was either Filipino or Hawaiian descent. And I felt that, um, frankly, that I was able to, you know, I guess empathize with the situation affecting our students because I was the only one there from those, those two communities. Um, there's so much work that needs to be done. And if you want, I can roll kind of right into the, the questions, you know. I want to bring something up, which I really haven't heard anyone talk about. It's an issue that is not as obvious as something like sidewalks or parking. You know, obviously, those are important things. And I have, I have things on my website where, and also in our sidewalks committee where we're working on those issues. But I wanted to raise the issue about kind of the equity of Kalih versus other communities on this island. You know, what I, what I hear from people when I go door to door is a feeling that Kalih has let me come. And, you know, no disrespect to Kapala Lama, but Kapala Lama too, you know?
Yes.
Our, our two areas often are under, under invested, I would say. And, you know, there's also no sidewalks in a bunch of parts of Kapala Lama, right? Similar kind of things, you know? Nobody sees their schools over there too. It was really hot at the Miami Elementary meeting in the Leta area, you know? But I wanted to zoom in and talk about, um, the issue of taxes. Something which you might find near and dear too. Um, and that's, if you were to look at it. Okay, we all pay property taxes either through our rent or through our mortgages, right? In Kalih, okay? Your house might be valued at like, say, eight hundred thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars, maybe a million dollars, right? That's pretty common nowadays. And that's how much it would, you would, you would bring in if you were to sell your house. Um, the property tax assessment is around the same amount. So the government, the city and county of Honolulu, is collecting all of the value of your house. If you were to go to other parts of this island, for instance, I was spending some time on Zillow, looking at Kohala, okay? Kohala, there's properties there that are seven million dollars. Five million dollars, nine, eleven million dollars, okay? The difference though is that, that the property tax assessments are much lower. They're like three or four million dollars less. And if we could put a PowerPoint up, we could look at some specific examples where the property is selling for, you know, seven million dollars, but it's being taxed as if it's four million dollars less. Which means that the city and county of Honolulu is not collecting all the money that it can. And what that also means is that we in Kalih and Kapala Lama, where the valuations and the tax assessments are very similar, we're actually subsidizing Kohala. There is more money, there's more taxes per, per property value collected in Kalih than there is in Kohala. And to me, that is fundamentally unfair. It's fundamentally unfair. We're paying, we're essentially paying more taxes than they are, okay? And this is an issue that, you know, it's not something that we would do without the legislature per se, until we have a statewide property tax system. But this is an issue of equity. It means that, you know, um, we should be getting more value out of our tax dollars. It's, it's, it's a fundamental issue of equity. And I think that we need to address it by, um, by adjusting our, our tax system. So that Kalih gets more, gets more value from the amount that we're paying. I know it's very nerdy and geeky, so my apologies, but it is something that we don't, that no one talks about. But I, but I, you know, to me, it's, it's not right. It's an, it's an injustice. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you both very much. We have plenty of time, so are there any questions from?
Anybody have any? Oh, Mr. Russo has a question, yes.
What are your thoughts on the general excise tax? Since you brought it up, should it be repealed?
Um.
By the way, we're the only state that has a general excise tax.
Uh, everybody has a different type of tax structure. That's the main structure that brings the money to the state. So if you were to repeal it, you'd have to replace it with something else or the state wouldn't be able to function. I think it needs to be revisited. The fact that by the time something gets to you, you bought this pen, probably been paid taxes on four times before it arrives to you. So that causes all the businesses along the way to have to pay taxes. And then you pay all of those taxes because it's, you bought the final pen. So there, I think there is room for reevaluating the way that it is done. Do I think that it's, um, we can just get rid of it? Not with one fell swoop, but I think that it can be, like I said, um, doctors, we have a very critical doctor shortage and part of that is tax, tax, the tax structure. Makes it almost, it's already expensive here, but it makes it almost unprofitable to be a doctor here. Uh, food and medicine. Basic, every day we meet these things and yet we're taxed on them. So just those things, I think, is a first step in the right direction.
Yeah. I think there's a lot going forward, your, your, your stance on that, Carol. And the other thing I'd add, which supports her, her point is that the argument for the general excise tax is that, um, it's a way of taxing tourists. Right? A lot of it gets, gets borne by, you know, by tourists coming and, and participating in the visitor economy. An exemption for food, medicine, um, especially if it's, if we could find a way to kind of, um, fence it so that it's, that's an exemption that only works for local people, like it's, it's, you get the exemption if you file income taxes here, you know? Something like that makes a lot of sense, right? Because that, that doesn't affect all of the revenue that we would be collecting from, from the ten million tourists from Hawaii. The other thing I'd add about taxation is, you know, you're right, if we do reduce the G E T intake, we do need to find a way of, 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 um, of offsetting that, that revenue, okay? And the thing I think about a lot is when Larry Ellison bought the island of Wauwai, he paid zero dollars in conveyance tax. Okay? And, um, you know, Larry, I'm sure he gets all kinds of special benefits that we don't enjoy. But the fact that he didn't pay conveyance tax to me is particularly egregious. And there is an entire community of billionaires who now live in Hawaii. And we are not taxing them adequately. Mark Zuckerberg just bought six hundred acres of his island in Hawaii. And his property tax rate is, is the same as the renters, you know, in Kekeha and Anahola and, and elsewhere. To me, that's not right. There's people who see Hawaii as paradise. The rest of us are really struggling to make a home. And we need a tax system that benefits local people.
Can I get a second follow up question?
So you think we could tax ourselves into prosperity?
No.
Right? The more we raise taxes, the more prosperous we become, right?
No, the more money you have to spend, but I think our state also needs to be a little bit more judicious in how they spend. Uh, if I spent like the state does, I'd be bankrupt.
We could talk about that for all day if you want. I don't have time to be duration.
No, prosperity for us is going to come with, I think, training our kids to be able to participate in the global economy successfully. You know, um, there's an there's an entire world, new world out there, you know, with A I and technology and carbon capture and food and all these things that are incredible opportunities for us in Hawaii. And we need to make sure that our children are able to capitalize on those opportunities. And we need to make sure that Hawaii as a place to do business makes sense, you know? Um, and I say this as a business owner who has run both successfully and not successfully businesses there. I understand very well, unfortunately, how difficult it is to, to do work here. Um, but I do believe that fundamentally, uh, we can be prosperous. And I, you know, food, I think is one of those critical things where we need to be able to do that. But I'm also kind of bullish on manufacturing. That, that that's actually a really key piece, you know, there has to be an industrial capacity in Hawaii. Uh, we've sort of let that, um, stagnate a bit over the last several decades. But if we figure out specific industries where we can build a competitive advantage, a strategic advantage, then that creates opportunities for all the young people coming up that they can aim to for, you know, for, um, for jobs.
Anyone else have any good questions here?
Anyone else has a question? I have no problem asking more questions.
Any non-tax questions? Anyone want to talk about sidewalks?
I'll, I'll, I'll change the subject if you want.
I want. Um, for you, um, Kaike.
Yes.
You know, you mentioned about, like, you know, for example, how the system was working uh, based on the, you know, the taxes from Kalih to Hawaii.
Yeah.
So you, you knew about it. What did you do to it? I mean, what did, what had you done when you knew that? Because I had some issues that I knew, especially when you talk about, you want more people to farm and be sustainable and stuff like that. I was in that situation where I kind of know what was a problem and I did something about it. What did you do at that time, when you knew about it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I mean, Simeon, I, I learned about this, um, like three weeks ago. And it was, it was a really fascinating conversation. It was over lunch downtown and it was with a person who is not from Kalih. It's a person who is a business person. They're the CFO of a publicly traded company. And they brought this to my attention because they found out that I happened to be running for, for this legislative seat. And it really blew my mind. But I also really appreciated the solidarity of the person bringing this to me, you know? Person not from Hawaii, not from Kalih, but they understood that when things are wrong, it's wrong. You know, and, and I really like that. I like it when people are a real clear sense of what's good and what's bad, you know?
You're talking about this issue about the poverty tax?
Yeah. Yeah, it just, it just brought to my attention.
I, I have a question. Does nothing to do with taxes or? Although even with Kalih, um, you've talked about balance.
Yes.
Um, I think, was it last year or, um, you were trying to bring up some of the some of our young, um, teens girls, important women there. Can they get an abortion or can you consult your doctor about an abortion with, and also with your parents?
Right.
And I just wanted to know, I would notice your opinion.
I don't think that's, that's right. I think that parents should be involved in the lives of their children.
So I want to parse the question a little bit because that's not quite the question that was asked. The question is, is it legal? Should it be legal for, for children to be legally questioned?
I just wonder what is your opinion of that? I mean, he, he felt that, he said on the, um, in press conference that he felt that the, the doctor's relationship with the, um, with this patient was a higher priority than the patient's relationship with their parents. And I was wondering what is your opinion? So, so would you answer the question?
Okay, alright. Um, I would really, you know, and I say this as a dad with daughters, okay? Um, there's definitely something really fundamentally wrong. If, in your family, if the child is not willing to talk to the, to the mom or their dad about, about this major life decision. Yeah.
I had hoped you guys would have brought in the Kalii law. The big thing that we know is that, that's coming to here, it's disrupting a lot of things. The hope is that the businesses might leave, and hopefully they won't stay or they'll come back. So I don't know what you guys take on keeping the businesses. How would we address this issue?
Yeah.
Do you think businesses will leave?
Yeah, what happens to the businesses is really tragic. And I'll bet you that I could answer for you too, Carol, in saying that if we were in office, you know, 15 or 20 years ago, when rail was decided, that we would not have done it this way. Right? Am I guessing right?
One of the things is that you, it should not happen on downtown land just because of all what we see out there and how long it's been and how long it's gonna be. When they did the studies, the amount of changes that had to happen underneath the road to put rail on top of the road was so huge, it was known and ignored. And so now it's like, oh, we just found out about it. Oh, you didn't. You ignored it when it came up and did it anyway. So I, I, yeah, I would have been right there saying that that's not a good choice, just because we have two more years of this. Well, we've already had two, right? So, okay, okay, alright. I'll, I'll go with you, but I was being generous. Um, but it's just not acceptable. Thirty thousand people traverse this street every day. They aren't the people who would be on the rail. They are people going home to, they're going to business. They're going to the busiest Costco in the world, except for one now, South Korea is more, but the busiest Costco in the world. They're going to school. They're going to drop off their kids at grandma's so they can go to work. They're on the bus going to in and out of our area to work. They're not going to be on the rail. But yet, we have this outside that's costing billions of dollars and constantly, oh, look, we found something else. Oh, my! So, I, I would not have been as supportive.
No, absolutely not. I mean, I remember being, I was in high school, I guess, when, when, maybe it was college, when, when the city council and Mayor Hammond pushed for the, what is currently the idea of, you know, the current plan for rail. Um, but it's really fascinating if you kind of peel back the history and look at all the other ideas that people, that we had for rail. Under, under Mayor Fossey, for instance, there was a plan, there was one of his ideas was to have rail go underground through the, through the heart of the city. You know, there's a beautiful illustration that I found on an old city document, which showed like, um, the, you know, rail kind of, kind of more Malca, like hotel street, um, area. Going underground, you know, by where the capital is, and there was like a water feature, and it was beautiful, really beautiful idea. And the thing is, if we had done something like that, uh, especially if we had done it decades ago, which is when Fossey was talking about it, it would be done by now, right? And it would not have disrupted our businesses in Kalii. It would, you know, a subway is, is much more advantageous, especially when we're talking about historic parts of our city, you know? And it's not like you cannot do subways on islands. Japan, all islands, subways. New York, islands, subways, right? It's totally feasible. And, um, it's really a shame that we haven't done that. And I, I, I think there's so many other better examples, both of how to design transit systems so that it doesn't disrupt, you know, business areas like this, but also how to finance it. You know, I, I'm really fascinated with how rail was financed in both Hong Kong and in Japan, where it's essentially private, it's the private businesses that would, that already owned real estate, that were the ones who paid for their rail systems. Because they're the ones who would benefit the most from that rail system. Right? In Japan, it was all the guys who, the companies that owned the real estate around the, the ring of Tokyo, and they made money from rail. As, by contrast, here in Honolulu, we, as taxpayers, are subsidizing property owners who are gonna benefit immensely from rail. And that is not fair. Why are we carrying that, that obligation, right? It doesn't make sense.
You, you stay in the point that you wouldn't have done it, but now that you're already in it, what are you gonna do? What, I mean, what, what, what do you guys intend, or what you will do if it's actually being subsidized and all that stuff? What, what do you, what do you, what would you?
I, I don't have an answer for you, Dan. I don't know what the current status is of the businesses along the middle quarter and what they need. What, what, what do you think would be useful, Carol?
Well, I think what you did involved all this stuff that you're doing, getting a price on what you're doing. And also with Amazon coming in, we like us to be on Kalii Valley.
Okay.
And I think they value if they can get jobs for people from the valley before they down there. When the transportation is not an issue, right? We're coming from the valley, because it's a, sometimes they're looking for people. So how can we incentivize some of that so that even our high school kids can work, get jobs at Amazon? So I think we have to be informed of what we're doing, and we have to be aggressive as far as how we're gonna populate the businesses into the people that live in doing things, staying for a time. You know, like, instead of going to my nine, I'll turn back to, to town. Because that's the, that's all just the rail, so bringing people back to town. The second city in Honolulu.
Yeah.
So some businesses are leaving Kalii, growing up there, which is the second city, which is gonna be worse. So, I mean, I've been away on a mission for 30 years, so I coming back and looking at this, this is not right.
Are, are the businesses that are being displaced from doing that, are they being compensated somehow for the impact of rail?
So that's, I mean, that's why I think the other name for it should be involved with what's happening now.
Oh, so, yeah.
I mean, can she be?
And I'm glad you mentioned Amazon. I, I have concerns mostly around, uh, the impact of, you know, of large multinational companies coming to Hawaii, you know? Same thing with the hotel industry, right? These are major transnational corporations with a lot of power, a lot of money. And they can either do good things for us or they can do bad things. And I, I, I'm really interested personally in seeing how do we, how do we make sure that the, that the workers at Amazon are, are intruding humanely, right? There's been a lot of reports, yeah, of, of folks in other, other Amazon warehouses where their working conditions are not humane, they're not safe, they're not well-treated. And also, I'm interested in looking at how do we support unionization efforts of those workers? Because that's, that's a very important thing. So, the Danites, collective party?
Alright, thank you very much, Nina. I think, I, I feel like we're drifting from our original purpose. Talk about some larger issues that I, for sure, we can't hold personally responsible for. But, thank you, thank you for sharing your views and thank you for fielding all our questions and for your time. Can I have a one? Oh, please.
Yeah, um, you know, you mentioned about, you know, encouraging more sustainably and food security.
Yes.
And this question is gonna, maybe you can answer it to Kaka, you know, after Carol. But what you're going to do now to encourage, because it's been talked about. You know, I, I discovered it on my own, you know, I retired military, and then all of a sudden, I heard, I just wanted to do some kind of fun, to be back in Asia or to bond back with my family, you know, to do what my grandparents did. And they didn't, they, the government or the people been talking about it, the leaders, that, you know, I, I even went up to government again, and I said, hey, what's going on with our food security here in our state? Our state lands, which is, it's supposed to be, uh, for the people, the taxpayers, so that we can, uh, generate the food that we need just in case if there's disaster or, to be sustainable. What you guys gonna do to encourage these, uh, leaders to really wake up and say, you know, we, we gotta work on this sustainability and food security for our future and, and hopefully that you, you, you guys can encourage the younger people. Because you know what? It's being neglected, that's what I see. And I think it bothers me so much that I'm still living today, still breathing. You know, I thought I wasn't gonna come back from Iraq or Afghanistan, but I face something that is corrupted and it's being neglected. Tell me what you guys going to do about it?
So, I have been, um, covering the egg committee at the house for eight sessions, seven, eight sessions. And, um, there have been small steps forward, but there needs to be bigger steps forward. I think one of the most, um, promising things that has been, been happening is what they call food hubs, which are places where, because of new, um, federal rules, the amount of cleanliness and procedures on a farm are much greater than they were. Hawaii got an exemption to extend that for a few years so that we could continue to make food available. But if you don't grow your food by their standards, you can't sell your food. So, the food hubs that they're creating, uh, one, a good example is on Big Island, uh, the Ulu Cooperative. They allow the farmers, one, they give training to the farmers how to process, how to, um, maintain their records, how to help them meet those standards. But then they can take their produce and go to the food hub and process it in the right clean environment that they can turn around and sell it. Without that, the average small farmer doesn't have the access to that space to prove, to, um, process their food to be able to sell it at Safeway. So I think that that has been a very good step forward in allowing, um, smaller farms to become profitable or at least to be able to sell their products, because you can't sell your products, not profitable. And then most recently, there was a, um, law passed, I'm not sure if Governor Green has signed it yet, but it allows for cabbage industry. So, you can make certain foods in your home and sell it to a store who then sells it to someone else. So, that has not been legal from, for a long time. The, uh, six years ago, seven years ago, the Department of Health finally backed off, so they wouldn't pass that law and allowed certain things to be sold. So if I made something in my home, I could sell it to you, but I couldn't sell it to a store to sell it to you, right? So, direct, but not third-party. The law that was passed this year allows me to sell it to the store so you could buy it from the store. So, the value-added products for farms tends to be what brings in the extra money. So I can sell you an ulu for six bucks, if it's a nice big ulu. But if I make it into ulu chips, I get way more, I add the value, you pay more for it, I get more from my produce. So allowing farms having the hubs and then allowing people who don't have, um, the very strict certified kitchens to sell their produce in different places is, uh, it's a small step, but it is a first step.
I think that's a good assessment of the demand, I'm, I'm sorry, of the supply side of the equation. On the demand side, I, I, I'm thinking about like, you know, the last time I went to Safeway, I didn't see anything that was made local. There's no local produce at Safeway. And I would like to have a conversation with like the buying managers at Safeway to ask them, what would it take on the supply side such that you would decide to buy local? Like, what do we have to do?
And part of it is the FISMA, is the, 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 the federal rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have friends who are terror farmers and they sell, but they sit, um, places like Kana, Skulu, they, uh, and I can't remember, maybe it was Safeway or another, but will take their, take their boy only on consignment. And they sell it at a really high price and nobody's gonna buy it because the store wants as much profit as possible, but it's too high and people don't buy it, and then they just ship it back, and now it's too old and we can't sell it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, this is.
I used to be on the board, uh, thank you for mentioning that. I just, I just remembered, I used to be on the board of Koa, Koop, which, you know, was trying to do, was trying to help distribute local agricultural products and, and encountered a number of problems. A lot of it in terms of financial terms.
Impossible for them to make any profit.
Yeah, it's really hard.
And impossible to sell rents and certainly other properties.
But, you know, um, I think that the value-add thing is really important things. I'd be interested in talking to people like Farm Link, do you know this Farm Link? Yeah, and trying to understand you.
Why can't you marry me?
Good, good, that's great, because I wanna know, what do we, what does it take to scale? Like, how do we scale up this model of, of, of local distribution? And the, the, the last thing, well, two more things, I guess. One is looking at zoning and, and looking at the availability of, of land for, for, um, the value-added piece because that's a, that's a tricky piece, right, is, um, a lot of times it requires like industrial land, and industrial land is very limited on all, at least. And Dagland is far, far away. And the, the fourth thing is procurement by government agencies, and the biggest one is the Department of Education. There's a lot of folks who have been working for several years on trying to adjust procurement policies within the DOE such that the DOE, which is a major buyer of food, you know, such that they would buy local. And I'm really interested in, in, in what can we do to expedite that, to speed up?
But DOE has increased the percentage that has to be local. They have a hard time making that because the farmers don't have the certification to sell to them. So, they, they can't buy as much as they are supposed to because processes.
Well, if you guess, if whoever's in office, why don't they help the farmers to become compliant, see that, that?
There has, there have been, there have been things like that, but it's just very difficult, especially the average farmer is sixty years old and does not speak English as a first language. Yes. So, these complex rules from the federal government, it's, they, they, they don't know how to comply. So there are classes now that are being done to teach them. A lot of people going out into, to help them.
That's the stuff for, yeah.
Right, exactly. So they are, but it's small steps, yeah.
We also have programs like, um, Model Farms, right? Kupu, which are doing good jobs of, of kind of with like, um, career pathway. But I, I think we're missing a, an, an additional step, which is, um, paying like, and I, this is gonna be a controversial statement, but essentially paying people to be farmers, you know? Like paying them nine to five to go and farm kaua, ulu, rice, you know, whatever it is, the, the, the things that we need. Because the, the problem, right, with any market system is that people are gonna farm to market, right? You, you, like in the Midwest, they farm biodiesel crops instead of food crops because that's profitable. We, we're not gonna, it's not gonna work for us. We have a food economy where all we have is parsley and vanilla and, you know, cacao. You gotta eat that every day, right? We gotta figure out, I wish, I just would. I wish, sorry. No, I'm on a diet, can't eat chocolate too, dude. No, we gotta figure, how do we, if, I, 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 I think we should just look at figuring out, how do we just pay people to farm the food that we, that we need to eat?
Well, the biggest problem is there's people that was designated to farm, but they think farmers, they're not farming.
Yes, and that's, there's a lot of stuff that they eat.
And that's why I wanted to ask you guys, what you guys, you think you guys could do if, I don't know. If that permits that you guys be in office, what you guys promise or what you guys gonna do?
Meanwhile, that, that's part of the problem, I think, of us.
That's the biggest problem right now, because that's why we're not sustainable. A lot of the land that's supposed to be farmed is not being farmed.
Right, and that's the corruption piece. Corruption, I've, I've come to realize, is like, is an undercurrent throughout, like, politics. And anytime we're dealing with like awarding land, you know, it's gonna be rife with corruption.
So what can the representatives, representatives in, in our district can encourage the, your bodies that will be the body?
I'm, I'm gonna interrupt here.
Also.
I mean, I, because, one, I, I feel like they have addressed it as much as they can. I mean, as much as they're capable of at, at this time anyway, and also because we're at eight thirty, so.
Maybe one more question?
Nina.
One last one, this could be a good one.
I hope we should peel the AC.
This is, this is a very good one, because she's, she's facing the problem. We have homeless problems. And we need to clean up our community. We need people to like help us, you know? What you guys wanna do, if you guys stay in office? But I, I need you guys to help me out. I mean, I've, I've been asking for help and she didn't help. You know, the last time we was in the streams, like, we had a representative, Pre-Pre Corin representative is helping and also our, uh, household.
Our policy right now unfortunately is to move homeless people around. That is our state policy, okay? To a very limited degree, we build housing for homeless people and we provide the mental health services and the drug treatment services that they need. But if you talk to the people working on those very like critical edges of the issue, drugs, mental health, what they say is they need money. The, the, the current allocations for their work is not sufficient. I hope that you agree with me, that you might want. And the housing programs, I mean, with all respect to John Mizzoula, okay? What's happening with the Khalali is like an order of magnitude, maybe two orders of magnitude, too small. We're talking, he started with building a couple hundred housing units. We need forty thousand housing units, forty thousand, okay? In order for us to provide affordable housing for all people in Hawaii, including homeless people. You gotta remember too, most people in Hawaii are one paycheck away from being homeless. Forty-four percent of our population is ALIS, asset limited, income constrained with employment, okay? They have jobs, they just cannot afford to live here. I cannot tell you how many people I've talked to every week when I go door to door who are leaving. Hawaiians, native Hawaiians who have been here for thousands of years, who are leaving, okay? Alright, so for me, this is, it's not sufficient for us to say, okay, we're gonna clean up an area.
Well, let's get to the bottom point.
I, I think I.
We're in, in our community itself, right? In our community itself. You know, it's like there's something going on in our community that I think we can fix, but it takes the leaders to move it forward. And that's what the question I was gonna ask you guys, that. I know you talked about the statistic based on homeless, but the words that we wanna hear is what we gonna do? As a community, as a.
I think I just said it, we gotta build affordable housing, we need to fund the mental health for us.
Yeah, well, I think that one of the programs that has been helpful is the core program of the city where instead of just grabbing a homeless person and either putting in the jail or taking them to the ER, they have social workers, they have people who go out to work with them. It takes time because not everybody wants help, so it takes time to build the relationship. But I think that that was a first good step, a good first step, and it's, it has been working. The state has a similar program. We've never heard of it, but it's there, it exists because it's not being used statewide in any measurable way. So, to get to that issue, we have to actually focus on it. It's not moving people from here to there. It's helping them deal with their issues. And so you need more than just the police to move them or take them to the hospital, and then they get let out and they sleep on outside of Queens on the grass.
In front of the Capitol.
In front of the Capitol.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a crazy system, yeah.
Well, you know, again, the whole community don't know that, like, half of us don't speak English, right? So, we gotta educate and we have to share among the community what we know. So as leaders, I think if we can be effective leaders to disseminate the, the information like what you said, I think it's gonna educate the people around us and I think that's, appreciate you guys taking the time to, you know, answer some of the questions that I answered, uh, that I, I asked. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
I'm kind of glad, yeah, that we have this small show and it actually allowed us to have a really good discussion. So, yeah, thank you both very much, and at this time we'll close our, we, forum.
And close the forum and then call back to the meeting? Just call back the meeting and it'll actually just be announcements of anyone that had anything to add or, uh, to report. But, um, I should dabble back in.
I think maybe it's too COVID. I thought we were done, sorry, but.
Yeah, oh, it's okay, no, well, it's, it's just, uh, just the announcements anyways. So like I mentioned, um, um, I'll announce at least what Dana brought up, which is that, uh, looking forward to our, the November twenty ninth annual Christmas parade or details to follow. But are there any other announcements, uh, from, um, online or in person? Or anything to, oh, Dana, you have something?
Yeah, uh, I'm from Farrington. School starts the first week in August. And August ninth is the back-to-school, out, out there in front, on the front lawn. It's, uh, August ninth, Friday from two to six. It'll be, uh, meeting the Farrington, new Farrington football coach and also, um, food trucks and all that kind of stuff and energy on the front lawn.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you.
Well, it's from two o'clock to ten to six o'clock. Who gets out, two, ten?
Two, ten to six P M.
Yeah.
After school, so. And are there any more announcements from the community or the forum anywhere? And if not, um, I do wanna state that the next Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Regular Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M at a location to be determined, uh, but also virtually via WebEx. YouTube's archive of video recordings of Neighborhood Board meetings can be found at youtube.com at City and County Neighborhood C two-five-five-nine. Rebroadcast of Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Meetings are scheduled on Olemo, channel forty-nine for every fourth Saturday at six P M as well as nine A M on the first and third Sunday of the month. And archive of past meetings may be found on olmo.org, olmo, uh, forward slash olomonet by searching on Kalih Valley. And if that's, um, it, um, are there any more, um, boy, I have here any more announcements, but, um, if that's it for now, we can, um, end the meeting. It is eight A M.